Okay, good evening. It's 6:00 PM on, what is today, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, and I call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome to WCBU and their listening audience as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mic should be open if you would like to take the roll call.
Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Grayup.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Velpula. We have a quorum present.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. A notice was received by Councilmember Ruckregal of the City Council in accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16142. Councilmember Ruckregal would be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion to Councilmember Ruckregal's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the City Council physically present at this meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by Councilmember Ruckregal to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the City Council, and the presiding officer shall declare Councilmember Ruckregal present. Are there any such motions? Okay, Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Oh, you're welcome. And I declare that Councilmember Ruckregal is present. All right, we're going to now please join me, and we'll stand for a moment of silent prayer, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, do we have any minutes to approve?
We do not have any minutes at this time. So we are on to the regular part of the agenda. It's 23-087 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the Declaration of Local State of Emergency.
Is there a motion? Councilman Velpula, you move to approve.
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Councilman Allen?
Okay.
Seconds that, okay, we'll take a vote. Hang on.
Okay.
Voting should be open, and we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, there are eight yays and zero nays. Oh, sorry, Councilman Ruckregal?
Yay.
Okay, that's nine yays and zero nos. That motion passes.
22-293 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article 19, "Operation of a Cannabis Business," of Chapter 18, "Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria." And on your desk, there are handouts with the presentation and supporting documentation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unless there's something from the members of the council, I'll go ahead and turn this over to the City Manager and then Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have a slide deck we put together to try and frame the discussion for this evening. Really, there's, I think, two areas of the ordinance that we want to look at, the first being kind of the zoning questions, and then the second part being the business licensure questions pertaining to cannabis. So I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Corporation Counsel, Kristi Kaputzka, to walk through the presentation and to lead the dialogue.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. City Manager, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So to sort of help frame the issue, because we've been discussing some of these for many months now, back in September, Councilman Allen asked the legal staff to take a look at the cannabis ordinance specifically in regards to our treatment of social equity licenses and social equity applicants. At the time, we knew that new licenses were going to come onboard. We also knew that they were all going to be social equity licenses. We then, at council's request, held three public meetings in October and November. We also had an online survey done where briefly the results of those surveys showed that the community members that responded to those surveys did not want to see a cap on the number of licenses. They did not want to see any additional zoning or distance restrictions. They did want to see onsite consumption, and they did want to see the council address social equity. So we proposed some changes to the business license ordinance that we have been discussing and revising just about monthly since then. The initial draft of the ordinance did largely reflect that input from the community, and then since then, we've struggled a little bit to get consensus or maybe a clear direction on how the council wanted to treat onsite consumption, and then really whether or not we wanted to see a cap on the number of licenses. So tonight, as the City Manager said, we put together just some brief slides to try to give an overview of where we're at with the licenses, try to describe the best we can what happened with all the licenses issued in 2022, show both in a chart form and in a map what we think potential dispensaries could look like here in Peoria, talk briefly about what comparable municipalities are doing, and then some of the draft ordinance changes. So currently, Trinity Compassionate Care Centers operates two facilities in Peoria, and you've heard me say this repeatedly, that in 2020, when those initial licenses rolled out, the state rolled them out by BLS region. And for us, that includes Peoria County, Woodford County, Stark, Tazewell, and Marshall Counties. So outside of Peoria, the only other dispensaries in our BLS region are one in East Peoria and one in Pekin. So we have three other counties in our BLS region that have no cannabis facilities or dispensaries in. In 2022, after a couple years of litigation, the state rolled out nine licenses for our BLS region. And I realize that's a little hard to see on the slide, so hopefully it's slightly easier to see on council's handout. The date there is interesting because the state regulation says that those facilities have to be up and running within 180 days. Now, there are some exceptions to that, and I'll talk about that, but generally, 180 days is where they want to see those locations. So in 2022, the state rolled out a total of 192 licenses. Councilman Allen asked me today how many of those actually opened, and after doing some research, we've determined that as of the end of February, of the 192 new licenses issued in 2022, only eight additional new facilities have opened out of that 192. We know that in 2023, the state anticipates issuing an additional 55 social equity licenses. That deadline, I believe, was March 1st or March 10th in order for those to be submitted. And by the statute, it indicates that our BLS region could receive one more license in addition to the nine that were rolled out last year. However, as I've mentioned multiple times, giving you an exact number of dispensaries that could locate here is a bit of a moving target because of how the statute was rolled out. The statute had early approval licenses, so for anybody that had a medical cannabis facility, they could also get an early approval license. Those facilities could also get a secondary site license. Then the state told us they were going to roll out 75 conditional adult use licenses in 2020, of which our BLS region would get three. Then there was supposed to be a lottery for 55 more licenses. Then there were supposed to be the social equity lottery, of which our BLS region could have gotten two more. We know that the litigation in 2020, or in 2021 and 2022 largely made it really hard to determine how many licenses were going to be issued out of those social equity lotteries. And then on January 1st of 2022, the state had a new regulation that said, well, you can kind of throw out all those numbers because we can change any of those that we want to for BLS region based on things such as travel times or wait times, populations of certain areas, or any other factor that they determined relevant. So I can give you the total number that's listed in the statute as far as how many should be coming to the Peoria BLS region, but I can tell you that really doesn't translate to much these days because we know that it can change. So when you look at this particular chart, this does not include the two Trinity facilities, but it does include the nine facilities where state licenses were issued for our BLS region in 2022. You'll also see at the very bottom, it includes a company called 2018 DT South Beloit, who in January of 2022 came and got a special use permit from the city. However, they are not on the list of licenses from the state of Illinois. That does not mean, however, that that special use permit is null and void. It means that the company with the special use permit could certainly associate with one of these other state licensees in order to open, but that company itself does not have a special use permit. So when you go down the list of that nine, we have three where the council has approved special use permits. One at 7628 West Route 91, that one is for Northern Cardinal Ventures. We have 1210 West Glen, which is Exotic Strains LLC, and then we have 3929 War Memorial, which is World of Weed. I will tell you that of those three that have special use permits, none of them have applied for a city business license at this point. We do require the business license for cannabis. All three of those have submitted building permit applications. Two are currently under review. One has been approved, however, the permit has not been issued because the building permit fees have not been paid, at least as of yesterday, when we checked. So trying to narrow it down a little further, because I suspected that we would want to see what this will look like based on council districts, we did include a slide to show you where all of them are based on council districts. We also put all of those potential locations on a map, which I realize is extremely difficult to see on the screen, so there is a full-size map with the material on your desk that I think will let you better see the dispersment of those locations throughout the city. One of the things that the council asked us to look into was how other communities were really handling these regulations, and not surprisingly, it's really a bit of across, it's all across the board when we looked at how other communities were handling these things. We looked at the 15 most populated cities outside of Chicago and looked at things like the maximum number of dispensaries, whether or not they allowed other cannabis businesses, distances that they required between sensitive areas, distances between cannabis businesses, and then whether or not onsite consumption was authorized. As far as a cap or a limit on the number of dispensaries, it went from zero with the Village of Cicero, who does not allow any cannabis consumption or any cannabis sales, to a maximum of five in Schaumburg. And for reference, I broke that down by population just so I could get an idea of how many cannabis dispensaries they had based on their most recent population, and that breaks down to about one cannabis dispensary per every 14,000 residents. As far as the maximum number of other cannabis businesses, interesting that two of the communities allowed dispensaries, but Bloomington and Naperville prohibited all other cannabis-based businesses. For the distances to sensitive areas, those restrictions ranged anywhere from 500 to 1,000 feet. Peoria's current license says 500 feet, and for reference, we had previously talked about distance for alcohol establishments to those same areas, and our license only requires 100-foot distance, and for tobacco, we require a 350-foot difference. You will see there that one of the communities in Springfield alters theirs a little bit based on what zoning district, so the more residential zoning you see, the more restrictive they get about those distances. As far as distances between cannabis-based businesses, most of them had either not addressed it, and therefore defaulted to the statutory 1,500-foot distance, or had something slightly higher than that. You will see that Naperville actually set theirs at, based on my math, what amounts to one mile rather than 1,500 feet. And Councilman Regenbach asked me earlier today for a visual on how much 1,500 feet was. I think it's about five football fields, or when we measured it on the GIS map from the front door of City Hall to the parking lot of the Riverfront Museum, it's about 1,500 feet. That was a great question because I hadn't hadn't thought about it visually before that. All of the communities prohibit onsite consumption. Now, keep in mind that onsite consumption is prohibited in the statute unless it is specifically authorized. So even if it's not addressed, it is prohibited. And then only two of the communities have actually specifically addressed social equity in their ordinances. Aurora has a cap of four licenses and reserves two of those for social equity applicants, and then Bulling Brook provides a discounted licensing fee for theirs. Again, we saw a very wide range of regulations. Some communities got very specific into building requirements, and on the other end, some communities did no more than adopt the tax for it. One area where the council has been clear, and we believe that we've received, you know, clear direction and a consensus on, is changes you would like to see in zoning ordinance. So Leah Allison has drafted a zoning ordinance that we would propose to put to the Planning and Zoning Commission once we make sure that we're on, we have all the right information, and you don't want anything else added to it. And that ordinance would do two things. It would reduce the time that a special permit is valid from two years to six months, and in addition, it would require special use permits for cannabis-based businesses in all zoning districts compared to now, where they're allowed in industrial districts, prohibited in forum districts, and then a special use permit in all other districts. Where we would appreciate some more feedback from the council is how you would like to deal with the five main points of the business license ordinance. How we want to address social equity applicants? Do you want to increase the distance limitation? Would you like to see a limitation on the license transfer? Would you like to prohibit onsite consumption? Or on the alternative, would you like to allow onsite consumption? And then, do you want to set a maximum number of dispensary licenses that the city will issue at any one time? So, Madam Mayor Protem, we can do this at your pleasure. We have the slides set up so that if you want me to address the ordinance in those five, you know, in that order, by those five pieces, we can do that, or if you'd like me to finish the presentation, and then you want to start your discussion, it's your pleasure.
I think it's okay if you want to finish, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Okay. One of those elements that we're asking to be amended in the ordinance is including a definition of social equity. You've seen this in all the versions of the ordinance. It's in your handout. It is verbatim from the state statute. One thing that we are asking for that perhaps we didn't see in other communities' ordinance was that those who qualify as social equity applicants provide the city proof of status. We don't want to be a burden on that applicant, however, so we're asking for what's called Exhibit P. That is attached to their state license, and it does show their status as a social equity applicant, that they're required to file annually or biannually. They would also be required to provide that with the city. As far as a distance limitation is concerned, we did not, in the original ordinance, include one. By default, the state statute would apply, which is 1,500 feet, but we are recommending that you consider inserting a specific distance limitation that is verbatim to the state statute, mainly because we have multiple social equity applicants that are all going to perhaps attempt to cite at the same time, and we want to make sure that we are clear that that 1,500, on how that 1,500-foot distance limitation would go into effect. I think another issue that's been discussed is the limitation on license transfer, and you've heard me mention before that something unique to cannabis-based businesses are perhaps how they buy and sell the companies, and you do see the use of membership purchase agreements rather than maybe straight asset sales that you would see in other businesses. So we would like the limitation on license transfers to include things such as a membership purchase agreement. So if that were to occur, that company would have to come to the city for a new cannabis license at that time. When we did the community survey, the community did have a majority of responders to the survey in favor of onsite consumption. That did not appear to be necessarily the consensus from the council, and there was some direction to include some language about prohibiting onsite consumption. Again, even if you would not include this language, onsite consumption cannot occur until it is specifically authorized. And then the last piece is really if the council wants to institute a cap on the number of licenses, where you would fall on that. So that initial number, 11, that we put in the ordinance for discussion purposes really came from adding up all those potential licenses that we know have been issued or are available generally in our BLS region. After doing some more research, though, we can tell you there were some interesting statistics that we were able to find. One is that we wanted to make sure when we initially said, perhaps consider including all 11, was that since we knew that social equity applicant, or social equity licenses were the only available licenses out there, out there right now, we weren't proposing something that would have a discriminatory effect on those license holders. Well, the most recent data indicates that of those 192 licenses, only 40% of those companies are actually owned and operated by a minority business, meaning a majority of those are not minority-held. And also, again, as I said, of the 192 licenses issued last year, only a small, a very small percentage of those have opened up. So earlier, I pointed out a statistic about Schaumburg having one in 14,000 when they selected their cap on licenses. So trying to understand if we were going to tie a license limitation to a population base, what would be reasonable? We were actually able to find a Commission on Government Forecasting and Accountability monthly briefing from January of 2022, and ironically, Senator Dave Kaler was the co-chair at the time when this report came out, that said that based on Illinois's current licenses, we're at about one dispensary for every 115,000 people in Illinois. But they were looking at how to get to somewhere between one dispensary for every 13,000 to 23,000 people, because that was of all the states that they looked at, and that was Oregon, Washington, Colorado, Massachusetts, Michigan, Nevada, and California, generally where those averages fell. Now, there were some outliers. Oregon, for example, had one dispensary for every 4,400 people, and then Illinois really was at the top end of that range for having one person for every 115,000. So we do think that if the state increased the licenses to 192, which we know isn't going to be quite likely, that would drop our statewide statistic to one dispensary per every 66,000 people, but again, that's still higher than the range the state seems to be striving for, at least based on the data we could find from this COGFA study that came out, or this COGFA monthly report, I should say, that came out last year in January. Nationwide, we also looked a little bit at some statistical data to determine how many dispensaries are out there for every 100,000 of a state's population. Oregon came in at the highest at 16.5. Oklahoma came in at 15.6. Montana was at 15. Colorado was at 14.1. Alaska was at 12.7. Washington was at 6.2. And then again, it drops all the way down to Illinois being at about one for 115,000. So with that, I am happy to take any questions, or I can rearrange the slides if it would help with the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council members with questions? Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. And thank you, Assistant Corporation Counsel, for the comprehensive recap of a topic that we're all so familiar with, but continually need to be refreshed on. If I could make just one suggestion, Madam Protem?
Sure, go ahead.
As we look at the draft ordinance changes, I think several of these will be pretty, pretty well-accepted, and the way I read this in discussions I've been having, it seems like the number of dispensaries is probably the greatest. So would it be appropriate to separate the issue perhaps? And can we, can we agree that changing the special use permit to six months versus two years to require special use in all zoning districts, that we all agree on, if we all agree on those, that we can give some definitive direction tonight rather than end up in a quandary again?
Sure.
The social equity applicant definition and status going in line with the state seems like a logical thing for us to do as well. Memorializing our distance limitation to 1,500 feet, the limitation on license transfers, again, putting this in line with the state, and prohibiting onsite consumption, I think, was something a lot of us agreed on. I think there was a consensus last time, so would, would it be appropriate to throw those out there and then come back to the limitation of dispensaries separately?
Sure, we can go through each one. So the first one, I think, is the definition of social equity.
There's the two on the previous page also, the draft, on page five, those bottom box.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So I guess the first proposed change that we'll discuss then is the special use permit being changed, that instead of it being valid for two years, it would be valid for only six months, which is something that we've discussed a few times when we've had this on the agenda. Is there anybody on the council who disagrees with that, has a comment, has a question about it? Okay, so it looks to me, as I look around the horseshoe, everyone seems to be in agreement with that proposed change. Councilman Ruckregal, or do you agree with that?
I do agree with that.
Okay, so that one's easy. Then we'll go on to the next one, which is requiring a special use permit for someone to get a license in all zoning districts. Currently, it's only allowed in industrial and commercial, is that correct? Corporation Counsel? Counsel?
It is allowed in industrial. It is a special use in any commercial district.
So right now, it's only permitted with a special use permit in an industrial district or a commercial district, correct?
It's a permitted use in industrial districts.
Oh, okay. And your staff is proposing to change that to allow it in all zoning districts with the special use permit, correct?
It would still be prohibited in the form districts, but it would make any, it would make it a special use permit in the industrial districts.
Okay. So, oh, I hear, I see Deputy Director Allison may have something to say on that. Okay, go ahead.
If I can just help clarify, as Chrissy mentioned, it's currently a permitted use only in industrials 1, 2, and 3, and then it's currently a special use in the commercial district, which is your B1, your C1, your C2, CN, and CG. The proposed change would only really impact the industrial districts to change from permitted to special use. So that would be uniform special use requirement from commercial through the industrial. No other change to any other district. Does that help clarify if that's?
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Okay.
And would that help, I imagine, staff with keeping track, I guess, in administering the program?
Yep.
Okay. With that clarity, is there anyone around the horseshoe that disagrees with that proposal? It looks like everyone, nod your head yes, okay, or a thumbs up, okay. Looks like all members present agree with that, except Councilman Kelly.
Well, I don't agree.
Oh. I didn't see it, sorry. I did see Councilman Kelly, and I called him, so hang on, and then I'll let you go, Councilman Grab.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to pass on that Councilman Seer is in favor of this change as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Grab.
No permitted use in a form-based district. Can you tell us where those are in the city?
So the, we have four form-based districts. We have the warehouse district, Prospect District, Sheridan Triangle, and Main Street, form district.
So they would still not be permitted there?
Correct.
Thank you.
And just as a, on that same topic, and they're not permitted in any residential district, correct?
Correct.
And we're not changing that as a proposal? Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment or question? Councilman Ruckregal, what's your view on that proposed change?
Madam Mayor Protam, I am, I am good with that proposed change.
Okay, so that's good. We've got clear direction on two of the proposals. The next one is the proposed definition of social equity. I believe, does anyone around the horseshoe have a question about that proposed definition? Is anybody, is everybody comfortable and supportive of that proposed change? Councilman Ruckregal?
I am as well. I'm supportive of it as well.
Okay, so it looks like the entire council present, as well as Ruckregal, agree with that change. Councilman Kelly?
Just for clarity, perhaps only for my clarity, the definition that we're using is the state's definition, correct? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then we'll move on to the next proposed change, which is to require social equity applicants to prove their status that they are a social equity applicant. Anyone have any questions about that proposed change? Councilman Ruckregal? Do you have any questions?
I'm good. I had no questions, and I'm supportive of that change as well.
Okay, is there anyone that objects or has concerns about that proposed change? Okay, it looks like you've got unanimous direction on that one as well. Okay, that brings us, I think, to the distance limitation. The staff is proposing to change it. I think currently, do we have a limitation?
No, currently we're silent, so we would default to the state, which is similar. It's 1,500 feet.
And you're just proposing that we codify that into our ordinance, correct?
Correct. We don't know if the state would ever change that distance limitation, so we would like to see one inserted into our local ordinance.
Okay. Councilwoman Jackson, do you have a question? Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? I'm looking around. Councilman Ruckregal, do you have any questions about that proposal?
No, and I would be supportive of it as well.
Okay, I do have a question about that one. With regards to the exception for the social equity applicant, I know we've had some discussion about this before, I would rather have that 1,500-feet limit apply to all applicants. So is it required that we have that caveat and that exception for social equity applicants or not?
If we don't have anything in our ordinance, that would be the standard language, because that distance limitation language is taken verbatim from the statute. You could require that 1,500 feet to apply to social equity applicants, just as if you could prohibit cannabis-based businesses in the city altogether.
Okay, that, I would prefer to do it that way. I just have always said I would like as much space between these as possible and would not, I don't want the city to be saturated with them. So I would prefer that it apply to all applicants myself. Councilman Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. I think this might be the window of opportunity to codify that as well, because there's no applicants that would be less than that right now, so we can make the playing field level going forward and make sure that all future applicants are aware of that, so.
So you agree with that?
I agree with you.
Okay. I'm not sure who, who, who asked first, but Councilman Euler, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I agree with the change as well.
With the exception or no exception?
At 1,500 feet regardless.
So for all applicants?
Correct.
Okay, so without an exception. Okay, Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. I would have to respectfully disagree. We're, looks like we're going to be heading to some type of limit on these dispensaries, and so I don't think we're going to have to worry about them condensing in a particular area, but I think when it comes to the social equity designation, the whole purpose is to provide opportunities and additional help to those who get this designation. We just had a presentation that those who are even getting this designation are struggling to even open up, and so if we can eliminate barriers by providing an exception from them to be a little bit less, that might open up additional venue opportunities for them. So I would have to respectfully disagree.
Okay, Councilman Valpula?
Madam Chairwoman, I actually would like to support what Councilman Zach Euler said. I understand that there is a social equity component in this one, but then I believe that the code is, code should be code for everybody, regardless of who comes in, because we don't want to change it. I understand the concern raised by Councilman Allen, but again, I believe that, you know, we need to have a unified code going forward. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Somebody want to make a motion? Since I'm the chair, I can't make a motion. Councilman Riegenbach?
To adopt the distance limitation of 1,500 square feet for all applicants.
And there's a second by Zach, or Councilman Euler. Is there further discussion on that? Councilman Ruckregal, do you have any comments?
No comments. I'll be ready to vote when you call for the vote.
Okay, I guess, is it, I just want to check with Corporation Counsel, due to the, it not being a policy session, is it appropriate for us to go ahead and have made that motion and then vote on it? Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
Hard to hear me without the mic.
Yes, I apologize.
So we're going to come back with an amended ordinance in any regard, but because there's a division, it would be helpful to give direction by votes, so we know what that is.
Okay.
We're not passing, just to be clear, we're not passing an ordinance, you're giving direction.
Okay.
And so to now, it's all been unanimous, so it's easy for us to figure out. And from the comments, it's clear that here we've got divided. So I think it'd be good to make a motion that we prepare an ordinance consistent with the direction, and that way we have the clarity of the vote to base that on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I believe we have a motion on the floor to direct staff to create a distance limitation of 1,500 feet for all applicants, without an exception. Okay, so we'll go ahead if there's no further discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Allen has another point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. And just to clarify, I don't want to see marijuana row in Peoria, Illinois, by no means, but again, if we are truly trying to foster equity in this space, we need to be, have foresight of removing different barriers, and so we know that there's going to be challenges for minorities and women-owned businesses to enter the space, having access to capital, having access to other different funding mechanisms, and so we need to have a foresight of that. So that's why I will be voting no, but by no means do I want to see a conglomerate of dispensaries on a particular street. I definitely don't foresee that happening with this language being in there. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All, the motion again, do you want to repeat it? Clerk Tar? Do you want to repeat it?
Let's see, to adopt 1,500 feet for all applicants across the board, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, please cast your ballots. Councilman Ruckregal? Okay, it looks like the motion passes with seven yeses, one no, but Councilman Grab, Mr. Peterson? Oh, okay, there, I see it. Okay, so we've got seven yeses, eight yeses with Councilman Ruckregal, and one no, so Okay, so that brings us to the next, sorry, Mr. Urick?
We have one item we need to clarify. Councilman Grab had asked a question about form districts. There is one exception. I don't know if, we'll ask Leah Allison to come forward.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it has to pertain to the warehouse district.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, and I apologize. I answered your question with, I need to add a caveat, the warehouse district frontage, specifically for commerce, does currently allow the opportunity for cannabis dispensaries. So I apologize, the rest do not. We do need to make some amendments to make that very clear, but a question for you, would you like us to also make an amendment to the warehouse district to prohibit the cannabis dispensary, which currently would be allowed as written?
Councilman Grab?
Yes. The warehouse district is a residential area, and what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and it's becoming increasingly residential.
So what I'm hearing from you is that you would support adding the warehouse district to the districts that prohibit cannabis dispensaries? Is that a motion? Councilman Grab, is that a motion?
Yes, that's great.
Okay, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Riegenbach?
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
I'll support this direction, but I want it to be clear for those stakeholders in the warehouse district to realize this will go to the Planning, Zoning, and Commission before it comes back to the council for a final vote. Just, the only reason I point that out is because we have not talked about that aspect of the zoning change previously, to my knowledge, so I just want to make sure that if there are people who have differing views, that they know they will have an opportunity to express those before the final vote by this council down the road.
Okay, I guess I'm, I was under the impression this was not going back to the zoning commission.
It has not yet been at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It will before.
Oh, so you, the plan is to take this to the, go ahead, City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Protam. The zoning ordinance changes do have to go back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to get their approval, and then come back to council for your final approval.
Okay, is there time to do that before the first week of May?
So this action would be on the next available May agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the third, or I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday of May is when it would be on schedule for your consideration.
The business licensure piece can be separate from this, and, you know, that could be acted on if council so desires, if you want to take that section forward. It doesn't require going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And that part, does that include the limit on the numbers, or is that the zoning?
That would include the limitations, which you'll be talking about here in just a couple minutes, yes.
Okay, okay. So the only way it would go to the zoning commission beforehand is if they were to have a special meeting? When is their meeting normally scheduled?
They're the first Thursday of every month.
So there isn't time to put it on the agenda for the April meeting?
Correct. Our legal notice requirement is actually tomorrow with a two-day pre-lead-up with the general star, so unfortunately, we would not be able to make the legal notice publication for tomorrow's deadline.
Okay.
Which would be for the April meeting. That's why I referred to the May meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But everything but the zoning changes can come back to us before that.
Okay.
Apologize for that clarification.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we still have a motion on the floor to add the warehouse district as a district that prohibits cannabis dispensaries. Is there any other discussion or questions about that? Councilman Ruckregal?
No questions or comments.
Okay. Seeing that there's no other questions or discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Clerk Tar, do you want to read back the motion?
The motion made by Councilmember Grab and seconded by Councilmember Euler was to prohibit cannabis in the warehouse districts.
Okay, it looks like everyone's voted. Councilman Ruckregal? The motion passes with eight ayes and zero nays. All right, now we're going on to the next proposal. Before we go to the, okay, the first, the next proposal is to put a limitation on the transfer of the license, which is on page eight, which is up on the screen. Is there any motion or discussion about this item? Is there anybody on the council that disagrees with that proposal? Councilman Grab?
Manager or Counsel Katuska, tell us what that means.
Councilman, the existing business license ordinance already has all the language you see up on the screen about limiting the license transfer. What this would do is if a company decides not to outright sell all the assets, but yet they're selling purchase agreements, or sort of shares, perhaps, membership shares of a company, when those start to change, it would trigger them having to get a new business license from the city.
So does that mean there could be sleight of hand occurring if we don't approve this?
There is certainly sleight of hand occurring throughout the industry now, yes.
Wow. So that's why we need to approve this. So that's why we need to approve this? Okay.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Deputy Corporation Kapuska, can you also talk about how incorporating this language would prohibit those who have the special equity designation to transfer that, or lack thereof, being able to do that?
It may directly impact anyone with a social equity license. It would depend on how they were trying to sell perhaps the company that they had incorporated. One of the issues that we will see, not necessarily now, but perhaps five years from now with any of our social equity licenses, is that the state statute has a provision that after five years, anyone who was awarded a social equity license can, in effect, sell that license or transfer that license by paying the fee that they would have paid if they weren't a social equity license holder to the state of Illinois, in effect, making the state whole for the discount they were given on their license. So if, for example, the city were to designate, as Aurora does, a certain number of licenses as social equity licenses, it will be interesting to see what would occur five years from now if, you know, perhaps bigger cannabis corporations, as we see happening in other states, attempt to buy the social equity licenses or those smaller companies. If in fact, a prohibition like this would help them maybe stay in business, or if they would be approaching the council, asking for that restriction to be removed, so that they could, in effect, sell the company or the business they'd built.
Thank you. That is definitely something that we want to keep our eye on for the forecast, because we know we will have some participants who are going to use minorities and women and things of that nature in order to obtain this designation, and we do not want to have that happening in our city. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilman Ruckregal, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion? I think it looks like it's unanimous, but would you prefer to have a motion?
I think we got the direction.
Okay.
Oh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilman Ruckregal.
Yes, I meant no unquestioned. I am a yea if, as the vote goes forward for this.
Okay, that's what I think we all thought, but thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the proposal to prohibit onsite consumption. I believe we've had some discussion as a council on this issue before. Is there anyone on the council who wants to make a comment, has a question about prohibiting onsite consumption? Is there anybody, Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I know that there is some interest in onsite consumption within the city of Peoria. Personally, I would like us to see us revisit this a few years down the line. I think that as we are opening more dispensaries in the area, we'll be able to see what impact that this has truly happened on our city, both positively and negatively, and then we'll be able to make a better informed decision if we want to entertain onsite consumption. But at this time, I'm feeling that we're not ready for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there anybody that disagrees with this proposal? Councilman Ruckregal, do you have any comments or position on this proposal?
Yes, at this time, I could not support onsite consumption.
Okay, so I believe you have, it looks like everyone around the horseshoe, including me, agree with that prohibition and that proposal. Okay, we get to the last proposal, which I believe we'll have some discussion. The staff has proposed to put a limit of the number of licenses to no more than 11 dispensaries throughout the city. Is there anybody that has any comments on this, questions, or other proposals? Councilman Grab?
Well, how did we come up with 11?
Councilman, I think we originally proposed, excuse me, proposed 11, because that included all nine of the social equity licenses that were issued in 2022, plus the two existing licenses for Trinity. So that's how we came up with 11.
Sorry, City Manager Urick?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One other point, if we were to follow and model what Schaumburg did, which was roughly 14,000 residents per license, we would be closer to eight. So it might be a smaller number than what we currently have. And I think, as we've talked about, there's at least five, one expired special use in the city currently, as we speak. So just to put that out there as one thought of what one other community has done.
One question I have about the numbers that we have right now, one of your slides had how many are issued. How many, it doesn't have the date when those special use permits were approved. So if we adopt the six-month limitation, first part of my question, would that apply to them, to those that already have a special use? And if not, if or if not, what, do you know the dates when they were issued and when those licenses will be expired, or those permits?
Thank you, I thought I heard Leah behind me. I don't think the intent was to make that six-month period retroactively, and with the zoning ordinance, we had also discussed perhaps the need to include some additional language about administratively, if that could be extended for a short amount of time, knowing that sometimes the process with the state, although they're required to be up and running, or supposed to be up and running within 180 days, the state also allows them to get a 180-day extension on their license. So when that license is initially issued, they're told they have 180 days to be open, to have located and shown what they call concrete attempts to secure a location. If they can't do that, and they have a hardship, the state will extend that conditional license for an additional 180 days. So staff had contemplated whether or not we needed to give perhaps the city and managers some authority to extend past that six-month period, the timeframe for those six-month special uses, if, for example, they were asking for a hardship from the state because maybe they can't locate a contractor. Maybe they're having a supply chain issue, and their product won't be in the store for another 60 days, those types of issues.
So I guess my, so the two-year limitation then would apply to the ones that have already had approval?
Yes.
Do you have the dates when those were approved, or when they will expire?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the dates, but I believe they've all been issued within the last three to four months, and maybe Leah has those for us.
So the 7628 Rest Route 91, I believe, was approved in December of 2022, just that, just a few months ago. And then, 1210 West Glen and the 3929 Warmer War, I think were approved the first part of this year, within a handful of months, so they are fairly recent and would have that two-year timeframe taking.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Euler?
Chair, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This seems to be the sticking point that has held this up for months and months and months, and I'm not really sure how we're going to get there if we don't start picking some numbers. And so, I guess my personal feeling here is that we've approved six so far, and that's the number I think we should keep it at, at least past the point of them being open and functional, and seeing what this looks like for the future. So I would make a motion that we cap it at six.
There's been a motion to cap or limit the number of dispensaries throughout the city to six. Is there a second? Councilman Kelly seconds that motion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and discussion. I know, Councilman Allen, you had your light on, do you want to speak to this motion?
Yes.
Oops, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I was in the neighborhood of six to eight, so Councilman Euler, we're in the same neighborhood. I'm a little reluctant to say six, because looking at what we have on the board right now, I'm leaning towards seven. It's more than that halfway point to our eligible BLS, which is 11. I think it gives us a little wiggle room, because once we put a cap on it, it may be hard to come back, you know? So I was kind of in the neighborhood of six to eight, and so, I'm a little nervous of having it just at six, you know? Because what I was thinking of is also two. I would like us to adopt the model that Aurora did and have some of our licenses with a social equity designation. So if we were to do seven, four of those would be social equity designations, and then three of those would be regular applicants. Or if we did eight, you know, five would be social equity, and three would be regular applicants. So that's kind of what my mindset was. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilman Riegenbach?
Thank you. Corporation Council, the Brandywine one, refresh, I know you talked about that earlier, but what's the status of that now that it's South Beloit and?
That company asked for a special use permit in February of 2022, which was granted. That company, however, does not currently have a license from the state of Illinois. They could associate with somebody who does currently have a license in the state of Illinois, but that company itself was not on the list of licensees that were awarded last year.
It was not?
Correct.
And originally, that was a social equity applicant, wasn't it?
It was only for a special use permit, and so I don't recall if that's how they identified them on the zoning permit. At the time they applied, I don't believe there were any licenses available for social equity status, although that could have certainly been the intent.
So when we say we have six in the works, we have two existing, three that have been approved recently that appear to be in the works, and then the sixth one is kind of in limbo. I like Councilman Allen's point about having a designation for social equity, and in that case, I think I like having an odd number of seven, because if we, if we want four to be social equity, we don't want all of our open slots to necessarily be reserved in that regard. So I think, I, let me just say, I like the seven and four concept. I think that, that always gives us the ability to deny a special use. That doesn't require us to fulfill them, but that gives us a little flexibility as we see how this whole thing plays out. And there certainly seems to be a lot of variables, whether coming from the state or even, even within. So I like the idea, Councilman Euler, but I think if we want to have some reserve for social equity, I would prefer to go with seven total, with four for social equity. Thank you.
Councilman Grab?
Well, I think we have to get a handle on 1210 West Glen. I think this is going to be now the third time I've asked for status on that. Is that one that can go forward in spite of the letter that the council and legal received from the shopping center people?
Thank you, Councilman. The cease and desist letter that was issued to the proprietor at 1210 West Glen is a private real estate covenant issue. And for perspective, when the location on Route 91 was attempting to cite, very, very similar language was raised by businesses that also had similar covenants. It's my understanding that the entity that originally issued that cease and desist letter has indicated they will take no further action on this matter.
When did that happen?
I was informed of that today.
Can you repeat that? Who's not taking any further action, the applicant or the owner?
I believe it was Schnucks that had originally issued the cease and desist letter, and information was provided today that, not directly from Schnucks, but information was provided today that we don't believe that they are going to take any further action. If they are, however, that is a private matter of enforcing real estate covenants between those two businesses.
But it does affect our number discussion.
But according to what a corporation council is saying, it's probably, it could go forward. It doesn't look like Schnucks is going to prohibit them.
I heard what she said.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood it.
I heard, I can hear, my hearing is fine. I heard exactly what she said.
Okay.
I heard exactly what she said. But this has been hanging out there for some time, and if we're here trying to count numbers and so on, and debating Euler's motion versus some other more generous notion, thinking we're doing somebody a favor, or some group, some social group, a favor, we need to have some ideas to whether or not this thing's even going to go. And as of today, this is the first I'm hearing of the status of 1210 West Glen, the first I'm hearing of it. And yet, we're making all these weighty decisions concerning cannabis, and how many of these we're going to have, and how many feet apart, who's going to benefit, and who isn't going to benefit? No one's going to benefit. But let's just go ahead and play the game and act like we're doing something beneficent for our population. I'm glad you knew what the status was of that, because I didn't until just now. Thank you.
Councilman Valpulo?
Just a clarification question. So let's say now we are, from 11, we came to six, and then we moved to seven. So out of these seven, how many of them are social equity applicants, and how many of them are not? Do you know that?
None. For clarity, a limitation on the number of licenses would not be a limitation on the number of special use permits that the council could issue. So if we're talking about state licenses, everybody on that slide is a social equity applicant.
Okay.
But we don't know the status of the facility on Brandywine, because they just have zoning permission, that company itself does not have a state license.
Thank you. The reason why I asked you is, I just wanted to know how many of them, because we are now dividing the slots based on the people who are going to apply. And I don't, I don't support such kind of things, because, you know, it should be the same. Social equity will have four, and the normal people, or general people will have four. We don't meet their reservations here. So I would actually go with what is feasible and what is acceptable, but I, let's say if everybody decided seven, that's seven. Eight, it's eight. But then, we don't want to distinguish, saying that seven would be, or out of seven, four would be social equity, or five would be social equity. All the seven could be social equities. We never know. That's what it is here. So that's what I, before I make a decision, I just wanted to learn your thoughts on that. Thank you.
So I don't see any lights, I'm going to make a quick comment. I support even a lower limit. I think, I think seven is too many for the city. I think even six is pushing it. I understand Councilman Euler may have made that motion based on the current applications or permits that have been issued, but I think based on the size of our city, I think six and seven is too many. I would go with, I think it should be three to five. I mean, if you look at this list, most of the cities that aren't that much smaller than us only allow two or three. And I, I think six or seven, and definitely eight, is too many in my book. So I guess for what it's worth, I just, I just think that that's too many. I've always been concerned about the city getting oversaturated and having too many dispensaries, and that we don't have the population to, we certainly don't have the population to support 11. And I question whether we have enough to support seven. And with regards to the, I'm not opposed to reserving some of the spots for social equity, but I think if the limit was seven, I think four is too many. I don't think they- I don't think they should be the majority of the number. If we go with six, I would support reserving half for social equity. So that's where I am. Councilman Ruckregel, did you have some, did you want to make some comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. And actually, you summed up a lot of what I was thinking is, right now, in my mind, six is a good number to set the current limit. At a future time, at a future date, as we sort of progress in the process, conversations can always be had to be able to raise that. But, and, and I could also hear the, the evidence for maybe a lower number, but I think six at this point, I can support. One question for our, our legal counsel is, is there any community which, on the social equity applicants, asks them to be either from the locale, the vicinity, the region of the state? And do we have a breakdown of the social applicants, where they're coming from? Are they coming from one part of the state? Are they coming from all over the state? And I guess I ask that to make sure that we are actually considering our fellow community members in this pool as well.
Thank you, Councilman. That's a really good question. I believe in our last council packet, we provided a list of all 192 social equity licenses that were issued in last year, and so you can see the breakdown. The goal for the state was to disperse them sort of based on population throughout the state. So based on population, there is a, you know, what the state would say is a fair and equitable distribution of those licenses. Most communities, and, you know, not unlike what we're doing here, because those licenses just rolled out in the last six months of last year, except for what we saw in Aurora and what we saw in Bulling Brook with the cost, have not yet put any more specific limitations in place. So the simple answer is no, except for the two we cited, we're not aware of any other regulations. But we won't be surprised if we see all other communities doing exactly what we're doing and that's trying to tackle how we handle this rollout of 192 licenses.
Great. Thank you. No more questions, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman Ruckregel. Just to follow up on his question, so I have that handout here. It looks like then there were, one, two, three, seven, nine issued for the Peoria area.
For our BLS region, yes.
Okay. So there's only really the potential for, at least before the new ones get issued, for nine more to apply. Is that right?
No, that nine on the list that you have are the nine that we have listed in the slide.
Oh, okay. So are there any, there aren't any more that have been issued by the state?
No. In 2023, we believe they're going to issue 55 more, all social equity licenses. That deadline was the beginning of March, and one of those is slated to go to the Peoria BLS region.
So right, with, with that, that means there's only a possibility of 10?
Based on what we know today, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. If we do land at, at six, I'd strongly encourage us to designate at least half of those for the social equity designation. I think in a perfect world, it would be great to say everyone will have equal opportunity to obtain a license, but the whole, one of the reasons why it was legalized in the first place was to ensure that those who have been impacted the most had an opportunity to participate in the commerce of it. Deputy Corporation Kapuska has shared some alarming data that currently that is not the case. We know that there are barriers when it comes to acquiring funding, especially because it's still illegal federally. And so those minorities and I think, and other demographics who want to participate are having a hard time acquiring capital, and they're having these different barriers. So we do need to have some licenses designated for them to ensure entry of participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Valpulo.
Nothing much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to support what Councilman Allen said. It's fair to have, you know, some reservations, but not, that's the earlier, my earlier point was not to, not to distinguish these things. You have to have four and three, but now since we are going to cap it, I support what you say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor for a limitation of six licenses. Any other discussion? Councilman Ruckregel, do you have anything else to add?
No, thank you for asking.
Okay, you're welcome. Go ahead then and cast our ballots. Councilman Ruckregel?
Aye.
Okay, looks like the motion carries with seven yeses and two noes. Do we have any other proposals or is, does somebody want to make a motion regarding that social equity cap that's been discussed here? Did you want to say something, Corporation Counsel? Go ahead.
Don't mind.
Please go ahead.
I think staff has expressed this as a reserve for social equity applicants and not a cap. And I want to be, make certain that our direction is clear tonight. Right now, I think all of the state licenses that are outstanding have all been issued to social equity applicants. The only pool that's possible, whether we, well, no matter where we set our limit right now, of new entrants would be social equity applicants. There aren't any, nobody else is licensed by the state right now. I think everything that's on our list, other than Trinity, right, is social, are social equity applicants. We set a limit, is what I'm saying is, or whatever, that's a reserve and wouldn't limit social equity applicants to any of the opportunities. They could all be social equity. I just want to make sure that we know we're not capping social equity applicants, and I wouldn't recommend that because I think that creates a lot of tension. I think it's an opportunity we're going to reserve and not a limitation as to that quotient. Thank you.
Good point. Does somebody want to make a motion about reserving at least three licenses for social equity or another number? Right, but if you don't reserve it, then there's no guarantee later on if the applicants later on, if no, if all of those that are out there pending do not apply for a license, and then some others come forward and apply, there's no requirement that they have to be social equity. If the council reserves spots, then at least one, two, three, whatever number the council decides would be reserved for social equity applicants. I think that's all, all Corporation Counsel was saying is not to use the word cap, to use the word reserve. So we'd be reserving at least a certain number of spots for social equity applicants. I see Councilman Allen has his light on. Councilman Allen.
I'd like to make a motion that we reserve a minimum of three licenses for social equity designations.
Is there a second? Councilman Riegenbach seconds that motion. Is there further discussion? Councilman Grab.
The maker of the motion, reserve for how long? How long would this reservation be respected?
And Allen, if you want to answer that, that's fine.
Indefinitely.
And that would mean indefinitely if there were other applicants do not apply because forever, unless they're social equity, we're not going to let it happen. Is that, is that what your motion is?
My motion is a minimum of three will be designated for those who have this designation, and the other three would be open for any and every other applicant.
Forever.
Indefinitely.
I'll be voting no on that. That's, no, that's not acceptable.
Anyone else want to have some questions or discussion? Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification to Andre's point and Chuck's point. Given that scenario, none applied, and we had others, does this give us flexibility to go ahead and allow those and add social equity in the future, or does this prohibit us from doing that? Now, don't we have some wiggle room?
I think it would be, it would depend on how the language is written in the ordinance. I, I don't know if Corporation Counsel wants to comment on that.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. This is a common mechanism used and has been used for years in liquor licenses. You can set whatever limit you want, as long as it's not arbitrary or capricious, and others can otherwise offend any protected classes or the Constitution. And any council, this council or any future council is free to amend that in the future. Is there flexibility? Absolutely, just like there is with every other piece of your code. No council can say that a future council can never amend an ordinance. And so is there flexibility? Absolutely, there's flexibility. And so indefinitely, I think, is the absolutely correct word. It is indefinite, but it's always subject to the action of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any other discussion? Councilman Ruckregel, do you have anything to say or any questions?
No additional questions.
Okay. I'm going to ask one more time. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor to reserve three of the license spots, I guess, licenses that are available for, for cannabis dispensaries will be reserved for three social equity applicants. I'll go ahead and open up voting. You can cast your ballots. Councilman Ruckregel?
Aye.
I just lost the screen. All right, it looks like the motion prevails with seven voting yes and two voting no. Okay, and I think that we have gone through all of the proposed items. Is that correct? All right, does anyone have any other further discussion on cannabis? Okay. Oh, Councilman Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I guess a point of clarification, so we have agreed that we're going to allow six licenses in the city of Peoria, and we currently have two operating, and then we technically have four in the queue. What is going to be our communication strategy to those who are in the queue, letting them know that we need you to either make moves and make this happen or get out of the queue so that way we can get others in? I know that we have adopted now to reduce the special use permit from 24 months to six months, and I think you asked this question earlier, but, you know, how are we going to expedite this now, now that we've put a cap on them?
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Excellent question. We can certainly, you know, issue correspondence to all of them, indicating that the city council's entertaining this ordinance change, and they could certainly present comments when it's adopted or after it's adopted. We could do the same thing and let them know that it's been amended.
Awesome, thank you. And I appreciate the conversation tonight. I think we're moving in a, in a right direction with this, and we can always reevaluate this in a, in a couple of years, but I appreciate the dialogue and the strategy that we established tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, and I concur. It was good to have a discussion and to set some definite direction on all the possible limitations. So thank you all for being here. I know some of us have been pushing to have this discussion for quite some time, so I'm glad we had it before the beginning of May. All right, I don't believe we have any other business. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, I guess then we move on to citizens' opportunity to address the city council. Since it's a special meeting, I don't believe we have new business or old business. So were there any cards that we received?
No, no cards were submitted.
Okay, I'll just make sure. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council? Could you, before you start, could you state your, your name and address for the record?
Yes, Eric Burns, 3815 North Maryville Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. I just got a question. You just voted. Is it a minimum of three or just three? Because I thought I heard minimum of three. I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but...
Normally, sir, what we do here is this is just an opportunity for you to address the council. There isn't usually debate back and forth. I can just clarify that what the council just voted to have the staff come back with an ordinance that puts a limit of six licenses for the city with reserving three of those spots for social equity applicants.
Okay. I just thought I heard minimum three, so that's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other citizens who would like to address the council? It doesn't appear that way. We don't have an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn? Councilman Allen. Okay, and it looks like Councilman Kelly seconded that. All those in favor, please go ahead and vote. We are adjourned.